And I'd like to ask Pastor Jim Abshear, say the invocation. Jim, as you know, Jeff Justice's dad, John, was pretty sick. And also ask you to remember the family of Chris Tackett from Dorton that passed away. That's Philip and Laura's son. And just, he's about my age, passed away this week. And it's a good family. It's very sad to hear that. So you would do that.
And the May family, Tommy May.
Oh, and I also forgot Tommy's, Judge May's mother. Just, that shocked me. Such a sweet lady.
Yeah.
And I remember that family as well.
Let us pray. Merciful and gracious and kind loving Heavenly Father, Father God, as we approach our tone of grace this morning, thanking you Heavenly Father for another beautiful day, for the blessings of life. Lord, just praising you and giving you all glory and honor for all things, knowing, Lord, that you are the great physician. And you know those that are sick. Brother Johnny is very sick. I pray your blessings upon them. Bless the ones that have passed this life, Lord. I pray for their families, that you will comfort them in a way that you know how. Father God, I pray this morning you'll forgive us of our shortcomings, be with us this day. Help us, Lord, as we conduct this meeting, do the work for the people of Pike County. And I just pray your blessings upon each and every one and cheer today. Father God, go with us through this meeting and on down through life. Lord, we love you and we praise you. In Jesus' name I pray, and amen.
Amen.
Next item is, is there a motion to authorize an appointment Penny Burke as acting fiscal court clerk in the absence of Lisa Little?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshear?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Skollet?
Here.
Commissioner Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Abshear?
Right.
We have a quorum. We are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Chet Hoxton if he would lead us in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. The next item is approval of appointment to the Pike County Cooperative, I'm sorry. I'm going to pass over that. I'm not ready to make that appointment yet. Paul, could you get me a copy of the statute on the process for appointment of people to the Cooperative Extension District Boards? I appreciate it. Thank you. The next item is adoption of resolution for filing of a flood control match program grant in the amount of ninety-nine thousand two hundred twelve dollars ninety-eight cents to be used as matching funds for the Levisport Basin Coal Run Flood Risk Management Project and approval to execute all documents related to such grant. Jimmy, is this money that's already sitting in the account or is this money we're asking for?
It's money we're asking for.
Okay. It's not coming out of coal severance?
No. No, no, no. It's coming from DLG to meet our project management.
All right. All right. I'll make a motion on this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshear?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is adoption of resolution authorizing the filing of a grant Resources Accelerating Needed Transformation Program of 2024, project application for up to one hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred fourteen dollars in grant program funds with the Cabinet for Economic Development authorizing directing the Pike County Judge Executive to execute any documents which are deemed necessary to carry out the project and authorizing authorized representative to act as the authorized correspondent for the project. These will be, funds will be used for matching funds for the Hillbilly Trails ARC grant. Sharon's working on this application. Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshear?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is authorization to submit a letter of intent for an application to the Kentucky Association for Economic Development Site Selection Group for the Wolf Pit Industrial Technology Park and approval for a check in the amount of one thousand made payable to the K A E D Foundation for the application fee. Sharon, could you come up here and just explain this real quick?
Greg, while she's coming up, do you have any bids?
Yeah. Okay. The KPD, Kentucky Product Initiative Development Program with Cabinet for Economic Development, they make available based on your population to each county, like Pike County's. Can you all hear me? Is this not on?
Two million dollars to let Pike County go and buy a one point seven billion to do a pad for the industrial park and site development and also to finish.
Wrong button. To finish the broadband and the natural gas. It's to finish the infrastructure there plus provide a build-ready pad. Right now, we are, what can I say? We're built, we're not build-ready yet until we put that pad or put a building there. So I've decided to do the pad.
Say that one more time now.
A shovel-ready industrial park means that you could, you know, the land is there, but you've got to dig, do your own found, do your own site pad, do all that. A build-ready site, which is what we want to be, is you either have a building sitting there or you have a pad, you know, like a big concrete pad. And I'm going to apply for funds to finish up the infrastructure and to also do that pad.
I know we had put an application in to build a spec building.
Yes, we, we didn't get that.
Okay. So the next step would be trying to get the money for a pad?
Right. Because they only approved one applicant per county.
Well, who got, was there another applicant per?
The city of Pikeville got it last year when I applied for the building. They got it for a four million dollar site pad.
Okay. So we got a shot at getting it this year.
Yeah, I hope so. I'm, I'm saying it. I'm, I'm asking.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize the submission of a letter of intent for an application to Kentucky Association for Economic Development Site Selection Group for the Wolf Pit Industrial and Technology Park and approval for a check in the amount of a thousand dollars made payable to the K A E D Foundation for the application fee?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshear. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshear?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
There was a change this year, which was good news. It was a fifty-fifty match. Like, the city of Pikeville's two million, they got, they have to put up two million. The match has changed now, and Pike County's match is twelve percent, which is great news.
Good deal. All right. Next item is adoption of resolution for the filing of a House Bill Six Project Proposal Grant Application for one point five million in local government economic development, single county funds for the Fiscal Court Bridge and Road Repair Replacement Resurfacing Project authorizing directing the judge to execute any documents which are deemed necessary and authorizing the judge executive to act as the authorized correspondent. This is the money we're using to do some of the road and bridge repairs and resurfacing. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshear?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is awarding of bids. Greg.
I do have a few things, Judge. It was recommended that we did a, do a bid package on our pickleball court resurfacing. We had bid opening October fifteenth on bid number three six dash two zero two four for pickleball court resurfacing, painting, and net installation. We had one bidder. It was Reed's Healthy Home Solutions of Belfry for a cost of twenty-nine thousand dollars. The bid meets all the specs that were in the bid package. This bid is for the installation of both John R. Phillips Park at Hardy and Johnson Bottom Park at Freeburn. It would be a cost of twenty-nine thousand dollars at each park. It would be my recommendation that we award the bid to Reed's Healthy Home Solutions for the bid price of twenty-five, twenty-nine thousand dollars. We kind of tentatively approved the whole project at a previous court meeting. Of course, Freeburn, that's, that would be the total cost at Hardy. We have the installation of the hardtop and then resurfacing and also the fencing. And I think the total cost for both projects complete was a little over eighty-eight thousand dollars. I think we approved that, but we just need to do a bid package on the resurfacing because of the cost.
Okay. So is there a motion to award bid thirty-six dash twenty-two-four to Reed's Healthy Home Solutions for the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars? Authorization to issue payment for the same.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshear. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshear?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
A couple of court meetings ago, we approved a bid on two salt dog, salt spreaders to go in the Peterbilt trucks that we bought last winter. We never had bought snow removal equipment for them. We did a bid package for the two salt dog spreaders. We also need to buy two plows for those trucks. I was a little bit delayed in getting the, the final quotes on these, so I'm just bringing it to you now. It's a Western nine point five commercial plow for installation of thirty lights on each of them for the two plows, for the two Peterbilt trucks. It'd be a total cost of twenty-four thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-two cents. That would have the two Peterbilts that we have ready for snow removal.
All right. So the cost for the plows with the headlights?
They will install thirty headlights, thirty lights on the plows.
Yeah. It's twenty-four one ninety-six forty-two. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve purchasing from the M S E companies in Buchanan, Virginia, the two plows with the lights and installation, et cetera, labor for the Peterbilt trucks for the sum of twenty-four thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-two cents?
This is Sourcewell pricing.
And it's a Sourcewell contract price?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Abshear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshear?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
The other six wheeler dump truck that we acquired in the middle of last winter was a Kenworth, the one that had the little bit shorter bed on it that we bought. We haven't bought snow removal equipment for it. I've got pricing on a, on a Western plow for it and actually on a Henderson Salter. They're both on Sourcewell pricing, but I did a little research and discovered that the Henderson Salters on an N P P co-op contract that we have, and it was actually a little less expensive. There's a little bit of difference between this Western plow and the Western plow that we're putting on the Peterbilts. The only, it's a couple hundred dollars. The difference is in the installation cost. But to be able to buy a Western plow for the Kenworth and a Henderson spreader for the Kenworth, the total cost would be thirty-six thou, and including installation, the cost would be thirty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. And that would, that should complete all of the snow removal equipment we need to purchase for this year.
All right.
Greg, that is a drop in, right? That is a drop in solve, Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. I just wanted to make sure.
Fabian, come up just a second, will you? So, you know, people want to talk about the county buying equipment and stuff. Well, you can't clean the thousand dollars of county roads with shovels. I mean, so we've got these trucks. We need to get them ready to go. It won't be too long till the, till that we, I mean.
It's right here on us.
I mean, you know, we've had winters that have been bad since I've been judge, and we've had winters we haven't hardly even put any snow, salt down. But how is the condition of the snow removal equipment? Have you all been getting the?
Listen, it is the best that we've ever had. Honestly, I mean, you could ask any guy on road department, and they'll tell you, anybody who's been here very long, they'll tell you this is the best that we've ever had as far as equipment to plow and, you know, plow and salt roads with. And we, you know, coming up, you know, we've got those pickups that the court had bought for the road department. We'll be, you know, we'll be outfitting those also, so. I think we already got approval to go ahead and after we're just waiting on them to come in. Yeah. For the, for the plows and, and Salters for the three F three-fifties that we just bought. Yeah. I'm like, we're in great shape on our snow equipment, snow removal equipment.
All right.
It's all new. We've never had that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. And people criticize us for buying new stuff for.
Yeah, but they're not the ones out there driving sixteen hours a day either. Maybe I shouldn't have said that. I'm sorry. But when you're out there, when you're out there driving, you know, the snow plow removal, I promise that snow removal is not an easy game.
Well, it's a dangerous game, too.
It's dangerous in your tents all day. I mean, you can't, you can't ever let up. I mean, it's a hard day's work.
I've been out with you during.
You, you have.
It's not much fun.
No, it's not.
And particularly when it's real dark. And one of the things that I had a concern about was the lights on the trucks not having.
And since then, and since you brought that up, now we all, we've put the light bars on all of our trucks.
Yeah. So, you know, Fabian and I went over, we were over in.
Fitz Creek.
Fitz Creek, and I ran the plow out there because the roads had been missed. And it was, you know, the problem is, because you're not using the headlights on the truck because the blade, and you got those, they had two lights. And when they got dirty, you simply, you could not see the roads. And it was dangerous. And I told Fabian we needed light bars on all the trucks.
Right.
And.
We have them.
That was, that was a safety, to me, it was a safety issue for the employees.
It was. It was.
And so have we got all of the Salters ready to go, oiled and lubed and everything?
Well, now they're currently, I'm not going to sit here and say all of them are, but they are working on them. And they will be, they will be ready. We kind of waiting because, you know, we're still black topping. So we've not stuck them on the trucks yet that we're using because, like I said, we're still asphalting. So we're going to try to push that, you know, as long as we can. But they are, but they are making sure that all those units are ready to go and can just be dropped in.
All right. So is there a motion to purchase the, on the Sourcewell contract, the Salter plow and the lights and the items that are listed here from the M S E companies for the Kenworth truck for thirty-six thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight, six hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents and authorization to issue payment for the same?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshear?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
The, the plow, as I said, is on Sourcewell contract. The Salter is actually on an N P P contract, which is a little bit better price. One other thing I have, Judge, is I was in a meeting a few days ago with William and Chuck and J J and Darren, and we were discussing a boom truck that we have that we use daily. That's, the engine is in bad shape. I guess, from what I understand, I don't know a lot about it, but it's a lot of blow-by and it's not going to last very long. This is a truck that we use daily. And when we really need it the most is during the holiday season, I guess, when we put out the open tops at the closed lots, when we close for a few days. Of course, that stuff's piled up. They put twice as much stuff in the open tops as they'll hold, and stuff's everywhere. We, we use it to clean all them up around those dumpsters during Thanksgiving holiday and Christmas holiday. But this is the, this is the piece of equipment we use to pick up a lot of the bulk stuff that's set out, you know, wash machines, couches, stuff like that. So we use it on a daily basis. We've got three quotes on replacing the engine. Two of them are quotes for swing engine, which means they're a complete engine. They're ready to swing over and set down on the truck. One is for Martin's Peterbilt, a cost of thirty-four thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents. One of us for Worldwide Equipment for thirty thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. And the other one is from Jasper Engines. This is if we purchased the engine and put it in our cell, our cost would be seventeen thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars. But when you buy this from Jasper, there's a lot of other things that have to be put on the engine to get it to where it's, I guess, you consider it a swing engine. Darren and J J said it's probably another six or seven thousand dollars. So, so really, this would be about a twenty-five thousand dollar cost. So really, when you figure these three quote quotes, the real difference, the engines, by the time you get them ready to go, are going to be about the same. Really, the, the labor is the difference. What it comes down to, is it better for us to try to do it ourselves and save six, seven, eight thousand dollars in labor? Possibly. But right now, we're shorthanded at the maintenance garage. I think, I think we're down a mechanic. And it might take them quite a while to be able to install this engine, whereas we could send it to one of these other ones and, and let them do it, and it'd be done in a lot shorter time, possibly in, in two or three weeks, when we make sure we have it ready to go with the new engine before the holiday season hits. So if you look at it like that, the difference between the Martin's Peterbilt quote and the Worldwide quote is about twenty-three hundred dollars. Another thing, if you let Worldwide or Martin's put it in and something isn't exactly right, you have somebody to take it back to to make sure it's right. In this situation, it'd be my recommendation that we, that we send it to Worldwide Equipment for the complete swing engine labor and everything for a total cost of thirty thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents.
Hey, Greg, let us come back to this one just to make sure. Let's, let's talk about this one again after the break.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm going to talk to Chuck about it, what we're doing. You have anything else?
No, that's all, Judge.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. As far as our, our work goes, honestly, we're doing well. We're, we're finally getting some, making some headway on our asphalt. I do believe that we will have the bulk of what we had intended to do. I think we will be able to get that done before the plant closes. So we're doing well there. We will be starting the bridge at Watson Hill, probably middle of next week. It's really just me getting that design out to them. So I, you know, I've not finished with my design yet, but once I get that out to them, we'll start that bridge at Watson Hill. We did work on the bridge at Herrick, and I think I called you and told you, we'd, we'd worked on it. And that honestly is a temporary fix. We know that we'll come back and replace that entire bridge. It's just that this will buy us some time on it till we can get there. Really, that's, that's about all. I mean, all the crews are working and, and they're working hard. The only other thing that I would like to ask you is, is if you could maybe help me out with some more money for the asphalt, Judge? I don't think he heard me, or he's acting like he didn't hear me.
He's all we need. He's all we need.
That's what I was wanting, that's what I was wanting there. Yeah.
All right.
Only thing was, as I was aggravating yesterday, I was going to ask you for some more money for the asphalt.
We'll do that, but I'm sitting here talking to William, trying to figure this other thing out here.
Okay. Do you want me to explain why I had to do this? Well, I mean, what happened there, Judge, is, as you know, but maybe the public don't, is we did put Millers Creek in for the emergency funding, but as you know, they changed, they changed the format and the, and the procedure it went to. So, honestly, it was partly my fault because I thought that the application I'd sent in would have just crossed over, with which it didn't. So, now we don't have time to get that, so we'll have to really, that's reason, because we have promised everybody that we would do Millers Creek, and we need to do Millers Creek, it is really a bad road.
Yeah.
And so, that's where the bulk of that money's going to go, is to pave Millers Creek.
That works. Yeah, it, it needs to be done, it's not been done.
It is bad. No, it's not, it's not been done in a while.
All right.
But that's all I have, Judge.
Can you get us an up-to-date number on how many miles we've paved?
Well, sure, I could probably.
In the last five, six years?
Mm-hmm.
If you could do that for me.
Yeah, absolutely. You want that today, or?
Just whenever.
Okay, yeah.
Before the next, before the next court.
I'll have it next court meeting, I'll have everybody a little spreadsheet with what we've done.
If that works.
Okay.
And is there a motion to approve the completed and scheduled work?
Motion.
Motion. Motion by Commissioner Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins, any question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, all right, Treasurer's business.
Approval to execute a proposal with J.M. Wood Auction Company to sell the Mack trucks in the December twenty, twenty-four auction in Montgomery, Alabama, and for the judge to sign all related documents.
Frankie, why don't you just read them all together, and we'll just do one motion?
Next is to authorize payment to the election workers, polling places, and election commissioners for the November twenty-four election, once invoices are received from the county clerk's office, to acknowledge receipt of the sheriff and clerk's twenty-five fifty report for September twenty-twenty-four, to authorize checks for lodging, registration, expenses for any employee needs to attend the twenty-twenty-four K A E D Kentucky Economic Forum, December ninth through the eleventh at the Hyatt Regency in Louisville, to acknowledge receipt of the Treasurer's monthly financial statement ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four, and last, to authorize payment of the expenditure approval list dated October twenty-first, plus any other utility bills before we run checks.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the Treasurer's business list as stated?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshire, any question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
That's all I had, Judge.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, and we do have need for executive session, would the county attorney please instruct the court and the public on the relevant provisions of the Kentucky Open Meeting Law?
To enter into executive session, according to K R S sixty-one point eight one zero, paragraph C to discuss proposed or pending litigation, and paragraph F to discuss specific personnel.
All right, is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We'll be in recess for executive session, return to call the chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn from executive session.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. And it would be my motion to acknowledge the resignation of Justin Hunter Kennedy as a C D O law driver on road lot five, effective, four H rate pay, effective October sixth twenty-four, to acknowledge the resignation of Tyler Stump, effective ten nineteen, I'm sorry, ten nine twenty-four, to acknowledge the resignation of Bryson Lane, effective ten eleven twenty-four, to acknowledge the hiring of Colin Samuel Keane as a seasonal laborer, two H rate pay on the special crew, ten eighteen twenty-four, to acknowledge the.